I'll call the February 18th meeting of the Common Council to order. Roll call, please.
Alderman Kurkowski.
Here.
Lorik.
Here.
Dukenyak.
Here.
Toman.
Here.
Gail.
Here.
Kuzakowski.
Here.
Everybody, please rise for the Fledge of Allegiance. Bridgette, would you lead us tonight?
Fledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, item three is the approval of minutes from February 5th, 2019. Check it over for omissions, errors, corrections. And when you guys are satisfied, motion.
Kurkowski, make a motion to approve the minutes of February 5th, 2019.
Oracle, second. Roll call.
Alderman, Lorik.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Kuzakowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Item four is a presentation on our city website, and with us tonight is Leslie Flynn to do it. Oh, Kevin's doing it.
Yep, actually Kevin did that.
Oh, one announcement, real quickly. City Administrator Andrew Vickers couldn't be with us tonight. He had a childcare conflict, and it being a light agenda, this was an opportune time for him to take that assignment with his kids, so he sends his apologies. Sorry, Kevin?
All right, good evening. Before we begin, I wanted to take a moment to thank all the other members of the website committee. Those members included Leslie Flynn, Communications Coordinator, Greg Dresen, GIS Administrator, Catherine Rosky, City Clerk, Jane Frank, City Hall Administrative Support Assistant, Jennifer Eldridge, DPW Administrative Support, Pete Wagner, Zoning Administrator, Sarah Kuzinski, Deputy Treasurer, Sarah Corso, Library Access Services Manager, Ann Barberina, Public Health Nurse, and myself. As you are aware, one of the Strategic Action Plan's critical success factors is a safe and welcoming and engaged community. A key initiative for the success factor was to undertake a redesign of the city's website to ensure optimal utility to end users. In April of 2018, we began to work with Vision Internet to redesign the city's website, and after 10 months, bearing any unforeseen circumstances, we'll be launching the new site on March 4th, 2019. Before diving into the features of the new site, I wanted to share with you some of the process that we used for this redesign. With the help of Vision, we surveyed staff, residents, and businesses here in Oak Creek to determine what the need was on the new site. The process also included user testing on the existing site, which involved giving individuals a list of tasks to perform on our existing site. I have a short clip that I would like to share with you guys of one of these sessions.
When was the last Plan Commission meeting? Okay, so Plan Commission meeting. Okay, whoa, this site is weird. It's got such a strange layout. Everything kind of blends together. Nothing really stands out, and I'm not a fan of that, and the lack of like bright pictures and things like that just make it seem so old school and not up to date. I'm just not a fan of the way it's laid out. Moving forward, though, so Plan Commission meeting. Let's see if I can type it into the search bar. Mission, meeting? Let's see if that does it. See if anything comes up. Whoa. I'm not sure what I'm even looking at. There's just... These are my search results? I can't, I don't, I'm not sure what's going on. It's such a strange layout.
So these two processes gave us a clear understanding of what the site needed to be, including ease of use, aesthetically pleasing with a modern look and feel. With the new website, we also created groups for department editors to help maintain their department's pages moving forward. That's slightly different than how the current site is maintained, which is just by IT. Now, we hosted a week of onsite training for the new department editors to ensure they all know how to use the new website. This training also included website accessibility guidelines to ensure the site is accessible to all residents of Oak Creek and site visitors. This was based on Web Content Accessibility Guidelines, or WKAG, including how perceivable the content is on the site, including text, audio, video, pictures, how easy it is to operate the site, including keyboard access, screen readers, and other accessibility devices, and how understandable the content is on the website using plain language. Moving forward, we intend to have monthly meetings to keep the website in front of everyone's mind. With that, I present to you the new city website. We're gonna start with what the mobile version looks like, so this is what it will look like on iPhones and cellphones. As you can see, it's very app-like. The buttons on this screen, we can customize between every page. So depending on the time of year, we could have a tax button where other high priority items show up on this page. On an iPad, it looks like this page, which is similar to our, the main homepage, but it's slightly different. The navigation is the same, but it's scaled to fit on an iPad screen. Then the city homepage. So this is the new city of Oak Creek homepage. On the top, we made it very easy for those that are not native English speakers to translate the website. It translates the entire site to that language, depending on what they select. Then across the top, we changed the menu structure a little bit from what we had, so now we have resident, business, visitor, government, and I want to. This is to make it a little more easier for visitors, site visitors, to find what they're looking for quickly and easily. We broke away from the siloed approach of the previous website where each department had their own homepage. Each department still has their own homepage on this site, but we are cross-linking much more between the different pages. Then moving down, we have a nice, big search right in the middle. One of the, with the user testing, it was quite a bit of, quite a few comments that nobody saw the white search up in the top right of our existing site, so that's why we made it nice and big, so people see it. The really cool functionality with this piece is there's also a address lookup function. So when you click that and type in an address, it'll bring you to a page similar to this, they're still building it, but it'll show the resident what district they're in, their elected officials, their polling location, and then the next garbage and recycling pickup days. It'll also allow quick access to tax info, GIS info, and their property assessments. Then the homepage has actually five different sections, which you can navigate either via scrolling or using the right side navigation menu. So the first option is our search screen which we're on, which has a nice big hero image that we can rotate the images based on the time of the year. Then the next section is our quick access. This is similar to the mobile homepage with eight customizable buttons, so we can change these based on the time of the year, just to give users quick access to what they're looking for based on that time. Next, we have a spotlight function. This ties in with the news piece of the website, and hovering over the buttons, they can see next and previous articles. Then after that, we have the events page. So here, it will show events from all the different calendars that are programmed on the website in one clear, quick, easy-to-find menu. And then below that, we have meetings. This will have all the upcoming meetings, and the really nice feature with this is we have the agendas next to each meeting right on the homepage, so you don't have to go any further to get to the agendas, and it loads as soon as you click it. Moving on, there's also a couple different functions of the website. One of them is what they call the Service Finder. So this is a nice cross-linking module that we can put services in, and it's searchable. We built one for the resident resources that replicates the new resident guide that Leslie and the new resident guide team for the Strategic Action Plan has been working on, so this is a copy of that with the same information between the two. Then we have a new Agendas and Minutes module, which is quick and easy. You can search, you can click, and unlike our current website, it loads much quicker. So that will make it easier for residents to find the information they're looking for. It also has a new staff directory, which is quick searching. Residents can search whatever they're looking for, whoever they're looking for, based on title, name, department. It also has an email function. Instead of putting actual staff emails on the site, it has a form. This is to prevent bots, internet bots, to go and skim all the addresses off our website and then spam everybody, so this is to help reduce the amount of spam emails in people's mailboxes. It also has a facilities guide, so where the parks we built, where you can select from the various amenities that the parks have to offer. And then each park has its own little sub-page that has information, and then also the amenities and the categories for each location. And lastly, each department still does have a homepage, but like I said, the information is cross-linked throughout the site, so that way it's easier for residents, business, and visitors to find said information. This is just the example of one of the departments that has been doing an awesome job on their sub-site. As you can see, it's clear and easy to read, and then they have various sub-pages below their main department page. So at this time, I can take any questions if you have them, or move on to the next item.
Questions, comments for Kevin?
Looks good so far, Kevin.
Yeah, it looks great.
Just a couple of questions for me.
Go ahead.
So I was gonna ask you about the police and fire, see if they had their own pages. Brought that up. The page where you were showing you wanted to email somebody?
Sure.
If you, it pre-fills the email address, right?
Correct, yes. So when you click on the email icon on the staff directory, it actually brings up a fillable form. So the resident will actually get, this will send from the website's email address to us, but it will give us who, what their email address is, their name, and then they also have the ability to change the subject and enter a message.
So, but if they want, you know, the email address in addition to just sending email here, is there another way they can get that?
There is. Further in the website, there's ability to find, and then we can also do various, for more information, click here, and then it pulls up your Outlook or Gmail and auto-fills the subject line with a email address.
That's it, thanks.
Sure.
So when did you say that you expect it running full-time?
We are pushing for March 4th. That's the first Monday in March.
Will you send out an email prior to it going live?
Correct, yep. We're also gonna do social media and all sorts of, we're probably gonna do a press release and a couple other things to really drive people to the site once it launches.
So what's, for the time being, what's holding you up from not being able to go live now? Still on the pages, basically?
We're, so, Vision, which is now Granicus, they did all of the content migration for us. We are still working on what's called user acceptance testing, where we're going through check and make sure there's no bugs in the programming, because it is a custom design compared to what they normally build, and that normally takes about a month, and we've been in the site close to 15 days now.
Kevin, I wanna follow up on what Alderman Kuzakowski asked you. You pointed out that on this particular page, you click the email section, you come up with that, that fillable box, it doesn't show the email address, but then you said somewhere else on the website, you can find the email address.
Correct. So if you click here to email, the other option is if you click on the person's name, it brings you to a different page, which we can, based on the person, determine if it's the email box or their full email address. The reason we did the, we're not showing as many email addresses on the site?
Yeah, I, I thought you, when you said that you could go to a different spot, that it was gonna show the email address, so since it's not, it's a moot issue, then, thanks. We're good.
Kevin? Hope to do work. Looks great, Kevin. It's really good.
Thank you.
Just out of curiosity, how long did the project take with citizen input and everything like that?
The citizen input portion took probably two to three months for them to complete the surveys, and then the user testing was actually done through a nationwide service where they submit the questions, and so we had quite a few of those as well. The design phase took four to six months, and then we just got into the site the last week of January.
And each department can change depending on the events and the news they have going on? Do they administer that, or do they go through IT?
With the new site, we are, with the department editor group, we are pushing that each department has the ability to go in and edit the content on their site. There is still an approval process, so once they edit their content, they put it into a draft mode, and then a super-user, which consists of either IT and Leslie from Communications, we can go in and approve that content that is added. And then we can also, for example, for the clerk's office, make it so she can post agendas without needing to go through that process.
Excellent. And then are there links on the website to take you to various Facebook pages for the city?
There is. With the new structure, Leslie in Communications actually built a whole social media page to see all the Facebook, Twitters, Instagram, YouTube, and next door pages that the city currently has.
Very good. Thank you.
Sure.
Anyone else? Well, thank you, Kevin. Look forward to it.
Not a problem.
Item number five, consideration of a resolution to approve the Suburban Mutual Assistance Response Team Agreement, or SMART Agreement, and Chief Anderson's with us tonight.
Good evening. The, I'm gonna just use SMART, otherwise it's a mouthful. The SMART Agreement's been in effect for just about 25 years. It's 25 years in May. We were part of that initial group. This agreement basically allows us to work with all of our neighbors in surrounding counties. If there's a big incident, we can call them up, and there's no, the agreement's written and to this date, we've responded, and there should be no billing amongst municipalities. I know in the council report, I use the example of when we had, on August 5th, when we had the Sick Temple incident, there's different levels for a SMART call-up, and we chose a level seven. Every level gives you five officers and fi, or one officer, five and five, sorry. So at level seven, we would've had 35 squads and 35 police officers coming to assist us. And they come and assist us, and they backfill their own communities if they need it. That's part of this agreement that took place 25 years ago. With that, they, we actually ended up getting many more municipalities, but the agreement, the reason there's a new agreement coming forward is there were just a few things that cleaned up state law, there were a few changes, so they were looking to make our agreement relevant to what's going on out there. If one of our officers is on a SMART call-up and they are injured, it's still our responsibility. Just as if somebody was here and they were injured, they're, they're, their community's responsibility, and some of those things were cleaned up. So we're, we're looking to get this agreement and stay a part of SMART, because it is a very good resource for our community. You know, when these things happen, you just can't handle them by yourselves. And it, it gives us, it's like the police version of Mavis. And this is actually the SMART model, it's in southeast Wisconsin. Other parts of the state and other, in Michigan, they, when we went to a conference, they wanted to learn more about this to try and model it after that. So there's a lot of things that were worked out by a lot of forward-thinking chiefs and city attorneys and city governments 25 years ago to put this into place.
Questions for Chief, Rich?
Alderman Dukenyak, 3rd District. Chief Anderson, you referenced the Sick Temple incident, but in a typical year, how often are the SMART resources that network in our community?
I don't have the numbers for it, but I would say if we're called up, it's something that's very large. I wanna say maybe it's less than five times a year.
Okay.
It's not, if somebody has a bigger event, they can become a part of it. And if we do a call-up, it's different stages, they're all pre-planned for every level. So if Oak Creek has a level, we're not always pulling right from our neighbors, because if something happens to our community, it could be happening to our neighboring communities, so all of this is predetermined on who can come. And if you don't have the staffing, you're not mandated to send somebody to it.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Anyone else?
Chief, is it for, it just says large events, I mean, emergency events or just something big?
It can be anything that's large, but typically it's emergency. I mean, they can still go through a mutual aid request for another event. I'll use one that's been in the news. So if Milwaukee, Milwaukee's not part of SMART, but they could do a mutual aid request for us for, if they would get the DNC, and if we had bodies, we could do this. If a, if somebody has a community festival, that's not what SMART is for. If somebody has a community festival and something bad happens at it, that's what SMART is for. So if we're having our, if we're planning an event on the square and there's going to be any type of protest, we can utilize SMART for that, to have them stood by, but just because there's an event, it's not what the communities call people, do a call-up for it. I don't know if that answered what you were, okay?
I was looking for, what about a, say a big shot politician, vice president or something? Does a campaign thing exist?
Typically, no. Typically, when we have those resources that are coming to our community. Now, I will say this, it's a little bit different, because the one time we, I'm gonna contradict myself, we did use them after the, in 2012, after our incident, because there was so many things that took place and the magnitude of what was going on, our incident was prolonged for a month and a half. So we did use them during that, but when you get a dignitary like that coming, you're also getting Secret Service, you're getting, the sheriffs are heavily involved, and Milwaukee Police Motor Unit is heavily involved because of the escort. So it's not impossible, but it normally goes along with a larger event that took place.
That's it? No further questions? Motion, please.
Dukenyak, move to approve Resolution Number 12034-02181 to approve the Suburban Mutual Assistance Response Team's agreement.
Oracle, second. Roll call.
Alderman Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Kuzakowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye. Item number seven, consideration of a resolution for a certified survey map for various properties along 13th and?
Six.
Can I jump over six? Ted, you know what? It's been a long day, and you know what? I guess we do need another plow, so we better get you in.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. Item six is to concur with the recommendation of Public Works to purchase a single axle dump truck with plowing equipment, so Ted, it's all yours.
Sure. I'll start out by saying, every, every one of the truck companies right now are bid out by the state contract and, and, and the Sourcewell contract. So we chose to work with Lakeside International, and the reason for that is because probably about 85 to 90% of our fleet is international, so the mechanics prefer to have that, and it just makes it a little bit easier for us to, to have similar vehicles in our fleet. The one thing I will say, if somebody says, "Well, how do you know you're getting a good deal on this thing?", and that, well, each, each one of the trucks, you know, they're varying prices, you know, some are more than others. Well, some of these options to use, like these state bid contracts and stuff like that for, for whole trucks and everything, haven't been around forever, and, and we've bid out individually for these vehicles, and the fact that 85% of our fleet is international will tell you that they've won the bid most of the time, so we're not out looking to buy, you know, like, something like ridiculously expensive or something like that. This is a pretty reasonable vehicle, although they are pretty expensive. I will say that we did look through the Sourcewell, the state bid, and actually, we found that the city of Milwaukee was also bidding for, for these vehicles. By going with the city of Milwaukee and Monroe and combining those two bids, Monroe only goes through Sourcewell, we were able to save about $4,400 through the other one. So this is a CEP project for this year. We budgeted $155. We did come in about $4,400 over our budget. We plan on making that up with, with our, one of our accounts for vehicle maintenance or, or something like that.
Questions for Ted. Steve?
Ted, I'm sure you'll make it up if you auction off that one here that you're talking about in the report, too. You'll probably make up that money.
Yeah, I'm sure we will. We do have a couple vehicles that we're gonna put on, and we're waiting to get them all together.
And for what it's worth, I answered an email from a resident, and I made the comment that they're driving these extremely expensive vehicles, you know, and it goes to show you that I was pretty close to it.
You were right.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Oh, again, much-needed equipment, so, and we are getting our use out of it this year, fortunately.
Yeah.
So, motion, please.
I'll move to concur with the recommendation of the Director of Public Works to purchase one 2019 single axle dump truck with plow equipment spreader, pre-wet system from Lakeside International, amount of $159,483.
Kuzakowski, I'll second. Roll call.
Alderman, Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Kuzakowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Now we'll get to item seven. Again, a resolution considering a certified survey map for various properties along 13th, and tonight, we got Carrie with us.
Hello. So this CSM is actually something that should look familiar to you. This was reviewed back in November of 2017, and it's to combine the properties that are in red on the screen, and actually, what happened, for various reasons, the CSM just wasn't recorded in the statutory one-year timeframe, so they have to go through the process again. Plant Commission recently reviewed this, recommended approval with the conditions to include a missing bearing and missing easements for utilities. Otherwise, if there are any further questions, there was a recommendation for approval, and that's pretty much it.
Okay, questions for Carrie concerning the properties there in the 1st District? Motion, please.
Kurkowski, make a motion that the council adopt Resolution Number 12035-021819, a resolution approving a certified survey map for John Thompson Highgate LLC for the properties at 7705, 7725, 7751, 7831, and 7869 South 13th Street.
Oracle, second. Roll call.
Alderman, Gail.
Aye.
Kuzakowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Kuzakowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Item eight is the License Committee. I'd like to turn that over to Alderman Kurkowski.
Thank you, Mayor. I trust that members of the council have reviewed the Common Council Report for the License Committee. Does anybody have any questions? Seeing none? Kurkowski, make a motion to adopt the License Committee recommendations as listed on the February 18th, 2019 License Committee Report.
Dukenyak, second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Kuzakowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Kuzakowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
And item number nine is consideration of approval for the vendor summary report for February 12th, 2019. If you have any questions, Bridgette is here waiting to answer those questions for you or the appropriate department head if they're in the room. Motion, please.
Lorik moves to approve the February 12th, 2019 vendor summary report in the total of $422,515.98.
Dukenyak, second. Roll call.
Alderman, Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Kuzakowski.
Aye.
And that will bring us to adjournment. Just for those of you that weren't aware of it, we did premiere on Around the Corner with John McGivern. It was on various times this weekend, and it's on a few times this week too, so you can check your local listings. Or you can go to YouTube and look it up, and is that something that could hit our website at some point in time? Great. So I encourage you to get out there and see it. So, motion to adjourn?
Kowski, make a motion to adjourn.
Oracle second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Lorik.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Thank you and good night.